The Bible been points that in the beginning there was seven churches.
Iti ponnrae nootu kanakana sabai galo, elavatlan nootu kanakana janangaloo illadae oru kala.
It was a period of time where we, like the present times, we do not have hundreds of churches and hundreds of people.
Oru vela sabai galu irundirukalam.
Perhaps they might be churches.
Ah, devan angigirithu indhi yel sabai galai.
But what ratified, God ratified were these seven churches.
Veipuruttila yarandhu, montru adhikarangalile, indhi yel sabai galakuritha dana, nelavarangal, avi aanavaraal, sutikata padukirada.
In Revelations chapters two and three, by the spirit of God, the state of these seven churches up in pointed.
Ah, naan marubidiyin cholukirai.
I repeat.
Veda sabai galu irundirukalam.
There might be other churches as well.
Veda sabai galu naa, onga palavidangalile devanaya arindavarkali irundu oliyam seidirukalam.
The meaning is, they might have known God in diverse manners and they were ministered to God.
Anal paralogum angigirithu, thoodai anipina sabai, indhi yel sabai galmaatharam.
But what haven't ratified and sent message are these seven churches?
Onrue yebesu sabai.
One, the church's effesus.
Matthorudru simirnasa sabai.
Next is the church's simirna.
Adhutadaa perugamoosaga.
The church's programmas.
Adhutthiyyateera sabai.
In the church of theater.
Adhikaduthu sardaisa sabai.
The church of char, sardas.
Adhikaduthu piladelbiaa sabai.
Church of Philadelphia.
Adhikaduthu lavodikiyasabai.
Church of Lavodicia.
Indhi yelilum, oreyoru sabai mattum, oru nerayvana oru sabai aga kaanappattada.
But among the seven, there was one church which was full.
Indhi yelilum, onrude naan, devanale varatapatta oru sabai, adi kurithraan, ipponudhu naan ungalkuchonnai.
Even among the seven churches, there was one church which was much appreciated by God, and therefore the church I was talking about.
Nengal mattharu sabai galin, vittilupi padithu parangal.
You go home and read about the other six churches.
Andha sabainudaya kurai gal sutikata patrukku.
The shortfalls of the other churches have been pointed.
Adu manandhirumbavendu vedhu oru koorikey vaykappattukku.
And also a request was placed that they had to repent.
Adu manandhirumbavittal, enna nyayathirupu, engara, oru nyayathirupunk kodukappattukku.
And if they fail to repent, a judgment will also pronounced for them.
Anal, indha piladelbiaa engara oru sabai kattum, kutramun chaata padavilai, nyayathirupunk kodukappadavilai.
But only this church called Philadelphia was not accused, neither was it pronounced judgment.
Idi adai kanvikirada.
What does it signify?
Sabai kullum, oru devi gal walvai walgaru oru kootam unda.
And there is a group of people who live a divine life even in the church.
Yel sabai galile, oru sabai.
Among the seven churches, one church.
Andha sabai kathar cholukiraa, naan unaguk thiranda vasalai, unakum unbaagavakeerai.
To that church, the Lord says that, "I will keep before you an open door."
Katharudiyaparisutha namathukka mayumundavada.
May God's holy name be glorified.
Manandhirumbavasiyam matthu, manandhirumb, sarayana oru manandhirumbalai, anubhuvum akki konda oru sabai.
A church which does not require a dependence because each and every day, it has been habitual to repent.
Kurai gal tediikpaditaalav, kandhibikamudiyad.
So even if you try to find out some mistakes, you cannot find.
Andha sabaiye narswachipattu oru sabai.
And that was a church which had a good witness.
Andha sabaiile avi aanavur tediipartunguada, oru kurai kandhibikapada mudiyavilai.
So even after the spirit of God, they're doing a diligent search, it cannot find a fault in the church.
Karanamenna.
What was the reason?
Andha sabainudaya payar piladelbiaa.
Because the name of the church is Philadelphia.
Inneki, anayasabai galaki padipattapayargal, sutappadukirade, nengal vilakathire parkala.
In the world, we also find that many churches are called by this name.
Chela uurgaluku kuudan, indha piladelbiaa engara payar vaykappattukrada.
Even certain cities, certain places are called after this name, Philadelphia.
Indriki, andha edam irukkada.
Even today, that place is there.
Andha edathuk payar Allah sahir.
That, the name of the place is Allah Sahib.
Abidinenna artho, Allah sahir, abidinna devanudaya nagaram, abidinna innikku, andha edathang irukkada.
So even today, that name is there, the meaning of the name is the city of God.
Anas sarayana arthameenna.
But what is the exact meaning?
Avi aanavarindha sabai kandha payare vaidhuthukka karanamenna.
What was the reason spirit of God has given this name to the church?
Ah, namuguada sabai ke payare vaythirukkaro.
We also have name for the church.
Ena payare?
What is the name of her church?
Ah, palaya payare ennada?
What was the old name?
Silon Pentecostal Mission.
Silon Pentecostal Mission.
Abidinenna artho?
What does it mean?
Ilankailarundhathu todangunavanaala, andha naadrundey payar adale tothikkondad.
So because it was started from Sri Lanka, the name was there.
Pentecostenbadu, esukristu uyirudu yelambi ayimba davudhu, marithu uyirudu yelamuna ayimba davudhanal, andhrekku parisuthavi anupappattada, anabidinana, namadeshabai kene payar vichao, pendekosenanal ilparisuthavi vandhuddanaala, pendekosae endru vaito.
So it was after the death and resurrection of Lord Jesus Christ on the 50th day, the Holy Spirit was sent, and therefore it is called as the Pentecost, that's why we call the name as Pentecost for our church.
Ah, Veelurle, mupattaru sabai gal, mupattaru denomination irukkada.
In Velur, we have about thirty-six denominations.
Oru bukku vayupadichai.
I bought a book and read.
Mupattiyaru sabai idukkum adigamaga irukkada, adigamaga irukana, pettikadamari vichirukkaramalai irukkada.
And there are thirty-six plus churches denominations in Velur, there are small churches which is beyond thirty-six.
Abidinana, karidhanana jolrada.
Is it not so?
Ah, nengadu bukka vannavaangi padichu par.
You can purchase that book and read.
Veelurudaya, full history ala iruk.
The entire history of Velur is there.
Ah, murangalyuthonne, andha bukkuk payar.
And that book is named as War and On knees.
Adhuk payar vandhu murangalyuthav, adh, kiva samivathal release pannanga, andha bukku veelurai pathiya, muttum.
So it is a book which describes about the entire history of Velur, and it is called as Murangalyutham.
Ah, andha buklani kavadichinga, namu mupattaru sabai irukkada.
If you read that book, you can find thirty-six denominations.
Nengalguada sabai gal, pal, perigipoyirukkunga.
So even today, we have churches in abundance.
Two by two, abidinno church vichin naavada.
And there's a church called two by two.
Two by two nu, tunikku, tunikku kuudha payar vendu, chokjana likumunala.
And there was a material called as two by two.
Abayantu by two tuvachin, keta, orne sana, esu rendrundu payaray anipinar, anall two fight.
So when we asked them why they have named the church like two by two, they said, "Jesus Christ sent disciples in two, in twos."
Ilankaila prachchene vandhavudhu.
When there was problem in Sri Lanka.
Namadeshabai gal, tamilnathla paladangalila thakappadada.
So our churches, many, many places in Tamil Nadu were attacked.
Idi ilankai, singala sabaiin svoli.
And because they called this as a Sri Lankan church.
Adinibitha sabai galukla, namadhey, Indiaaliyupala kolapangal vandada.
Consequently, we had lot of troubles, lot of commotion in India.
Adhuk payar, adhuk pinbupayar, ebrimaatappattada.
Afterwards, the name was changed.
Thapandekosasabai nu, Tamilla chonavone, anegatamilnadu pendekosasabai nanegaraga.
So when we say the Pentecostal Mission in Tamil, many people think it's Tamil nadu Pentecostal Mission.
Adi English today vartada.
It's an English word.
The Pentecostal Mission.
The Pentecostal Mission.
Abidinenna artho?
What does it mean?
Chellagama.
What does it mean?
Adha pendekosasabai, abidinngiriga. The Pentecostal Mission, abidin svolna, idu dan pendekosase sabai, abidinenna artho, varu onnume enakadada, pendekosasabakadada, adha, pachayana, English inga, sarayana, Tamil.
The exact meaning of the English term, the Pentecostal Mission, is that there is no other Pentecostal church other than this, this is the very Pentecostal church.
Abidinana, karidhana, universal truthukumunala, enavodu vanga, enavodu vanga, T H C, Dean poduva, oru sunda, oru moonda, adhuk da, da sun, da moon solva. Adheemadhi, adhalata oru independent pasavatana, namalala muttalakidange, ungalaru sande, ena yungamattunna, enadun solidanga, karakta select pani adistaanga, the Pentecostal Mission adista, ababidinenna artho, even daam pendekost, varayaare enakadada, pendekasake kadada.
So talking about the universe, it's mentioned as the sun, the moon, and likewise, other people also commented saying that these people have taken the right name, that they are the Pentecostal Mission, and there is no other denomination which can be called after that name.
Anapiladelbani av payar vichaga.
But why was it called as Philadelphia?
Abidinenna artho?
What does it mean?
Sagodarasneegam ennada.
Brotherly love.
Sabai endru solukirada, sagodarasneegathunala, pinni pinakappattada.
The church is something which is mingled among with brotherly love.
Indha sabaiile venditabharag, sagodarasneegam illena, indha sabaiile devan unne konduvandhuthindi nokkam, neravetcha padavilai.
After coming to the church, if you fail to have brotherly love, then the purpose with which God has brought you to this church is not fulfilled.
Namalai engayavurunna.
We were somewhere.
Ah, namalai engayakonduvada.
He has brought us here.
Namigayakonduvandhuthu nokkav, namadhey, sabainudaya, sarayana devanudaya thittamenna, sagodarasneegam.
Why, what is the purpose God has brought us to this churches, the, we should have brotherly love?
Pentecostin svolna, abishya.
When you talk about Pentecostal's anointing.
Adhalata nama abishyakuthuka, adigamukkyathu okodukkara.
That is why we give more importance to anointing.
Adu vola sabai endru solumbadu, angay sagodarasneegam teavai.
Likewise, when you talk about church, brotherly love is mandatory.
Enga sagodarasneegam illayo, andha sabai neliithrada.
Where there is no brotherly love, the church cannot continue.
Sagodarasneegam ennbadu, nam, paiichivikke vendiya, oru mukkiyamana, oru anubhava.
Brotherly love is a very important experience, we should experience every day in our life.
Sagodarasneegam ennbadu daan, migum mukkiyamana.
Brotherly love is very, very important.
Een?
Why?
Namelarup palakarappattadjanangal.
Because we are diverse kinds of people.
Palakudumbangalila perandavarkal.
We are born in different families.
Palakuligal peesukkavarkal.
We speak different languages.
Palakalacharangalila varandavarkal.
We have been brought up in different cultures.
Namadhey, rathatala vitthiasangal unda.
And there are differences in our blood.
Namelaruyum orayrathamaga maathukrata.
But he makes all of us as one blood.
Abanamelar, engayavanditabharag, namukulla, yetha taluval varakkudada.
Therefore, when we come here, there should not be any differences, partialities between us.
Eppu yetha taluvaru?
When there will be ups and downs between us.
Unmanigunukulla yetha taluvarudana, sagodarasneegam koraydada daadu varu.
So when there is differences among, or differences of opinion among people, brotherly love when it depletes, it happens.
Evareyar, padimoonrue, onrue solukirada.
Hebrews thirteen one says.
Ah, sagodarasneegam, neliithruckakkadavada.
Let brotherly love abide.
Abidinenna artho?
What does it mean?
Sabai kulla, sagodarasneegam, yappudum irukkavent.
And there should be brotherly love always in the church.
Adhulmaamisigum kalakkakudada.
And there should not be carnality mingle.
Adhulpirivinigalku edanguduthrakudada.
We should not make room for divisions.
Adu konjanal irundhitu marubidi, adu koraydubohavukudada.
It should not abide for some time and then wax away.
Sagodarasneegamnde, sarayana arthameenna?
What is the meaning of brotherly love?
Oru affection irukkavent.
There should be an affection.
Idi kurithu, roamer panirundu patthila, avi aanavur peesumbadu.
Concerning this Romans twelve ten, the spirit of God says.
Roamer, panirundu patthu.
Romans twelve ten.
Sagodarasneegathle, oruvar mailoruvar pachamayirunga.
Sagodarasneegathle, oruvaruku oruvar pachamayirunga. Be kindly affection one to another with brotherly love.
Ah, oru sagodaranodu, onakkur affection illana, neepatha thotharamonav, oru shirippa, andha smiling av pona onne, takkun onyode veyyapi.
So if you do not have a brotherly affection with others, you will just smile, you will say praise the Lord, but once the person departs your smile, immediately go off.
Eppanamadhey, anvillassaere kaitthalamana anbu.
Today, our love, love is artificial.
Abidinana?
Is it not so?
Paathavonne, shiripichipag, tapun nintruga.
The moment they see, they will give a broad smile, immediately it goes away.
Adu sagodarasneegam alla.
That is not brotherly love.
Sagodarasneegam kradu, adale pachamayini irukkano.
So when you have brotherly love, you should be affectionate.
Adavudhu, oru sagodaran padikappattana, neepadikappattadu vola onanu.
The meaning is, if a brother is affected, you should feel as though you are affected.
Avukila ulundutana, ayova, avulundutana, engara, oru paridhey vipu onakirukkano. If you. Chachachana, abidin poyirukkuda.
If he falls, you should have the sympathy that he has fallen down, you should not say that, "Oh, he's fallen, that's okay," you should not go your way.
Inneki, etnavarukal, sagodarasneegam irukkada.
Today, how many of us have the brotherly love?
Inneki, anayirukke, friendship irukkada, anadu unmayana friendship kadada.
Today, many people have friendship, but it's not true friendship.
Oru shilleru kusagodarasneegam irukkada, adu maamisigamaga irukkada.
Some people have brotherly love, but that is carnal.
Adavudhu sundangal, andha kurikappattauur, elavatla kurikappattayenau, kurikappattad, andha janathodada, avukkenirukka. Nengavana, epa pootamudunjavune, patti, nena epa solidana, nengavuushara arkalaa, kootamudunjavune, nengavati, na, karakta, andha nda grouptha, andha nda payya, andha nda bunnu, andha nda parentstha, abid, joinedav.
So they mingle based on their religion, based on their languages, based on their community, based on the place where they hail from, and likewise, so after the meeting is over, you can find them forming groups like this.
Avuksaapadapunala, andha, adheemadham pawanga, angasapthadi, abidipadav. Anaa, inge oru pathu, puriyatthuma vandirpa, avakabri, puddusha, paraka, paraka, baddhitu, pastor yar, pastor, ebrimaapakrada, enanu teriamen, avakipoyidharpa.
But these people even to go, have food, they will grow in groups and have food, but there'll be some, about ten new souls would have come, they'll be wondering, they'll be clueless, not knowing how to meet the pastor and so.
Oralte kettirukranga.
They've asked one person.
Konjanal, engadhabai, ningavandhamarundchi, aduparavareveely.
You have come to this church for some time, but after that, you are missing.
Abavach svolna?
He said.
Konjanal illana, ettu masavandavan, sabai.
Not little time, but I came to your church for eight months.
Ettu masavandha, oru oolyakarnu, oru oolyakari, oru viswasyo, nee yar, abidin, et months, enne, orutam kuudan, enisindhalaa. Oolyakarnu kerkala, oolyakariyinkerkala, viswasyile, oru aanavpanno, illa palayamut, yandavur viswasyo, nee yar, abidingra, oru kostina, enisilai, enia, kerkala, indha sabai kina, yanga pono, visaripattu oru edam.
I've been attending churches continuously for eight months, but none of the workers, none of the believers, either old or young, none of them have inquired about me, and why should I go to this church? Because nobody cares for me.
Unakigay, oral puddusha arka, mudunjavune, stotram brother, sister, ebrimiginga, sisters, sisters, keta potho, brother, brother, keta potho.
So after the meeting is over, if you find someone new, the brothers should ask the brothers, "Who are you?" and we have to wish them, and sisters should do likewise.
Vanga pasta pakalaa.
Come, let's meet the pastor.
Nella, nengasapthu poga.
So you have food and go.
Ippudi, namu vittukavandavla, yartha visarikino? Nee indha vittlu oru member.
You are a member of this family.
Ah, nee daavunakutthukundu, vesaapadavak.
So you have to take care of the person to have food.
Abavunakigay, engay oral, parichyamayu vittada.
So therefore, one person is acquainted to him.
Adhavara, vandu, onyepapa.
Next week, he'll come and meet you.
Ah, avukka, nengajebikino.
And you can pray for them.
Ippudi thanga sabai engaradu, valachyadeerad.
This is how church will grow.
Adapati, onnume teriamen, ibadu poyituntha, avukbaadu kovavanga, avukbaadu poyidharpa.
So if you're ignorant of this and go your way, then they will just come and they will go as they.
Unadhey, anvil, mayamattu, tanmai, sagodarasneegathala, mayam irukkakudada.
And there should not be any hypocrisy in your love.
Onne bedhre, onne, irupathi, irandai, parkumbadu.
First Peter chapter one, verse twenty-two.
Onne bedhre, onrue, irupathi, irande. Ahayal, nengal mayamattu sagodarasneegamulavarkalaga, avi aanavai, satthiithruthukee kilpadiyidhe, ungalathumakalai, sutthamakke kundavarkalai, irukkabadiyala, sutthayiruthayidhodu, oruvaril oruvar, ukkamay, anbu kuru. Ebru, idu, periya, subject.
This is a great subject.
Ah, enna solirukkada?
What is mentioned here?
Sagodarasneegathle, nengal mayamattu oru lai irunkai.
You should be unfeated in the love of brethren.
Ah, adhuk karanenna?
What is the reason?
Nengal satthiithukke kilpadiyidhe.
Obeying the truth.
Ungalathumavai, nengal sutthamakke konda.
Purifying your soul.
Suttayiruthayidhodu, oruvaril oruvar, anbu kuru.
You got to love one another with pure heart fervently.
Yendhey edathalayame, sagodaranvil, poison kalakkakudada.
At no point in time should you mix poison with brotherly love.
Abidinenna arthana?
What is the other meaning?
Maamisa anbhai, palakkavikakudada.
We should not encourage counter love.
Ah, anbu engaradu, adu oru, unidamana.
Love is something pure.
Adu ondu, parisuthathodu, enindhada, daadu payar ennada?
Love is something connected to holiness.
Saradana?
Is it not?
Devan parisutha.
God is holy.
Avukinnu, andha, avurde, naanayathle, ennu oru pakka ennada? Devan, anbulav.
So on the other side of the coin, you find God as love.
Indha rendilayu, avur ebripattav.
In both of these, what is his nature?
Akkini.
He is a consuming fire.
Abo, ungaludiyanvil, maamisum, varulla, nollayakudada.
Therefore, in everybody's love, carnality should not mingle.
Avukengal uurkaranga.
They are belonging to.
Avukengal jadi karanga.
They are belonging to our tribe.
Avukengal sondho.
They are my relatives.
Abidipoyipoy, kadesila sondhamave, aaduvaiva.
So they will say like this, and they'll become a relative itself.
Abidipoyipittu, kadesila, vunbunna thariya, vunpayana thariyama.
And later on, they will say that, "Will you give your son or?"
Ippudi ponnadu, andha, dam, pentikastu, thanudiyavilayai, yelandavittakrada.
Because Pentecostal has gone like this, it has lost its strength.
Adhunday shining, ketuponadu, idanala da.
This is the reason why its magnanimity is gone.
Katharudiyaparisutha namathukka mayumundavada.
May God's holy name be glorified.
Indhi choli irukkada, ungaladhu mayamattu, daagukkaventav.
Here, it is mentioned that your love should be unfeated.
Onne bedhri, moondramadikaram, etta vasanathai, parkumbadu.
First Peter chapter three, verse eight.
Nengal yarakkamulavarkal, ibidi, palakariyinkal, solidhe, sagodarasneegamulavarkam, irukkaventav.
So mentioning so many things, like you should be very full, courteous, he says that you should have the love of brethren.
Onakkayarakkam irukkala.
You might have mercy.
Manu urukkam irukkala.
You might have compassion.
Yenakkam irukkala.
So you might have.
Oruvaranappattavana irukkala.
So you might have one mind.
Anai ivigalukum, mattila, nee sagodarasneegamulavana, aimirukkaventav.
But among all these, you should have the love for brethren.
Ungaladhey, anvil, mayam irukkakudada, yamathirukkakudada, vanchichirakudada.
So you should not be unfeated in your, you should be, you should not be feated in your love, there should not be deception in your love.
Yebesier, madhala madhikaram, ennada solukirada?
What is Ephesians chapter one saying?
Ulakathothuthukumune, kristukul, devanamithi, edhakaaka, terindukonda.
Why has God chosen us even before the foundation of this world?
Anbil parisutha.
That he is holy in love.
Anbil parisutham teava.
We need holiness in love.
Anabidinana, taav, ungaladhey, sagodarasneegam, mayamattu, daagukkaventav, sagodarasneegam, neliithum irukkaventav.
That is why your love should be unfeated, it should abide.
Oruvaril oruvar, anba irupada.
Loving one another.
Idu, devanudaya karpanai.
This is a commandment of God.
Unne nesikiradu bolani, matthu, onne nesipada.
You got to love others as you love yourself.
Irandham bedhri, madhala madhikaratthai, parkumbadu.
Second Peter chapter one, when we read.
Yelavasanam ennada solukirada?
What does the seventh verse say?
Devabaktiyode sagodarasneegathayum, sagodarasneegathodey, anbhayum, koti valangungal. Idu onnodu, onnu mixai, boodhu, da, taste different arukku.
So if this mingles one with the other, the taste will be different.
Veru, uppinigasapthuvingala.
So will you eat only salt?
Cholena, veru pulipasapthalama?
So can you eat only sour?
Adu karakta, andha, measurementla, andha ratio, la mixagum boodhu, da, ennada? Adi taste.
So when it is mixed in the right ratio, then there is a good taste.
Adhalata, onnu bedhri, rendu bedhri, onnu, aru, yelal, nengi, anjilarundhi, da, pakala.
So that is why, in second Peter chapter one, verses five, six, and seven, we see this.
Viswasyathodu, daiyan charanu.
So with faith, you got to add.
Daiyadhodu, nyanam charanu.
With bowels, you have to add wisdom.
Nyanathodu, ichya adakkam charanu.
With wisdom, there should be temperance.
Ichya adakkathodu, porumay charavai.
With temperance, there should be patience.
Porumayodu, devabakti charanu.
With patience, godliness.
Devabakti odu, sagodarasneegam charanu.
With godliness, brotherly kindness.
Sagodarasneegathodu, anbu charanu.
With brotherly kindness, charity.
Oru samayal danga, idu, idu oru samayal.
This is one cooking.
Abidinana, karidhana?
Is it not so?
Ah, nengadu, tanni, kodikavichai, adhuk parag, andha pakku, vandhavunna, onnu, onai, eniseno, karakta, mixpanite, varnus.
So when you boil the water, when it comes to a particular state of level, then you'll put everything one by one.
Karakta, nengavunna, vandhavuna, nalak.
So if you bring it up brightly, then the taste will be good.
Idalaya, yadu, onne, misspantigna, ennacha, tholanjapiduvini.
If you miss something or the other, then it's lost.
Ornal, oru purusha, vandhu, manavita, keta, enakalva, sanjikudun, svolna.
One day, your husband asks the wife, "Please make me some halva."
Abavas svolna, okay, na sanjitaara, andha bukkamutthu, vayuntavirukkans.
She said, "I will make it, but just please purchase this book for me."
Avukvay, oru bukku vayukkuttha.
And he bought the book.
Alva.
Alva.
Ah, alaha sanjitaan, andha sabai.
She beautifully made the halva.
Ah, avella sanjimurichavune, ivanndara.
And after everything was ready, he came.
Supra arukkana.
He said, "It was wonderful."
Purushanu, kethuthukudanga.
She gave it to the husband.
Avur vaile, kethavichara.
He kept it on the mouth.
Vaichavprag, vaiththarakamudila.
Afterwards, he could not open the mouth.
Mel vaayadu, nindjichipoy, kappan, ootich.
So his mouth was stuck to the upper.
Adhuk parag, unkikilayavala, melayavala.
And afterwards, he was not able to open the mouth up or down.
Bangarakashtappattaa.
He was struggling.
Ebridya, veliyadu.
Somehow, he managed to open.
Hey, neen, 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 bukku vayithantha, na bangarama sanjivay, abidya, adhilirundu, munimisham kodikavudungal, munimisham aaravudungalma, avas svolna, andha buklai, ennada sanjijolirka, adha, apudiyana sanjijan.
So he asked, the husband asked the wife, "So you said, if you purchase the book, you will do everything," and she said that, "Whatever is written in the book, I have done that."
Abavam svolna, abindha bukladha, da, dappa.
So then he asked, "Is it wrong in the book?"
Okay, neeravanda, kadekavetam.
Okay, he went to the shop.
Anga poyikada.
He asked.
Ippidi sanjjo, kadesila, vaile, ootu, ootti, nam, padadu, vadu, vodit, ennaya, bukku, nusol.
So he asked, "What is this book?" We did, as per the instructions given in the book, but my mouth was stuck.
Avan svolna.
He said.
Andha buklai, enne, aliyurunis.
What is written there in the book?
Seidu barun, daan, solidunis, saapthuthu, varna, onyepolna.
It says, "Just try cooking it," does it say that, "Try eating it?"
Andha bukkani, padichupad, mel, ennavuduruke, ennavuduruke, seidu bar, seidu daan, nee pakkano, adhuk karakta, varudha, varleyan, nee saapthutthi, engayavandhu, sagarapanna, kudada.
So it says that, "Look at the tagline of the book," it says, "Try it," it does not say, "Try eating it."
Adheemadhi, ungalvittli, iviklan, sanjikaattuva.
Likewise, people will cook in your house.
Pridikalan, na, negi, ennada, direction, la, ungalavakeenavam, urshuva.
So if they don't like you, they will just take, take a chance by that.
Anadheen, nerathala.
At the same time.
Anbu runda, opilladala, nengavathasapthidharpe.
But even if you don't have salt, you will keep, keep on eating it.
Adheen, nerathala, pasi, runda, pasi, ennasiyada? Rusi, adiyah, avvaadu, sapthidharpa, pasi, illan, svolna, da, idu, edukka, apdisanjai, idu, edukka, apdisanjai, idu, nalala, idukkala, karanam, pasi, illada, da.
At the same time, when you are hungry, you will eat whatever is given to you, but when you are not hungry, then you will find fault with each and everything.
Adhalata, Tamilla, svolna, pasitthabin, pussy, abadhan, neetaste, chandapodam, nee vaadukkukudutha, onne, sapthu, arma, vaiirnavandhu, onne, poyidharpa.
That is why in Tamil, they used to be saying that, "You have to eat food after you become hungry."
Adhalata, nengavitupad, padichupad, rendu bedhri, onnu, yel, onnodu, onnu, mixai, mixai, varumbadu, da, kristvin, puranam, varukrada.
In second Peter chapter one, verse seven, "Go home and read," so when everything mingles in the right proportion, then the love of Christ comes in.
Andha, andha, ratio, adu, chandukittayavarkal.
It should be mixed in the right ratio.
Abidivaramboodhu, final, varumbadu, kristvin, manavattingrada, vandhintruk.
So when it comes in the right proportion, finally, it comes to the stage of being called the bride of Christ.
Katharudiyaparisutha namathukka mayumundavada.
May God's holy name be glorified.
Indhi, nam, parkumbadu, indha sabai, kuritha, avi aanavur, peesukrada.
Here, the church, the spirit of God talks about the church.
Ee, indha oru sabai kumuthu, thiranda vasalavakeerada?
Why does the Lord keep an open door for this church?
Namil, anegarukku, oru keldvi, enak, engabonavu, muttiyidharukkada, kadavu, bhootiirukkada, enak, edhusinjalavai, kela, ibidi, oru kostina, engayapadi, varukirukkada.
So more than half of the people here have the question that, "Whichever I go, place I go, wherever, things, whatever, things, I put my hand into, the door is shut before me."
Andhavarku, oru naamam irukkada.
And the Lord has a name.
Adu ennada?
What is the name?
Saavedin thiravukolai, odayavaa.
The one that holds the keys of David.
Amen, pootakkadavadi, tharakkavav, tharakkakadavadi, bootukrav.
So he is the one that opened it, that no one can shut, and shut it, that no one can open.
Ippudi pottad, devatadha, naam, indeki, orshippanra.
We are worshiping such a kind of God today.
Pinney, eppudi, namakupogaradangal, la, kadavu, pootappadukrada?
It's then, why, what is the reason that wherever we go, the doors are shut?
Idukulla, maranjirukkara, satthiyam, marudalithal.
So the truth behind this is denying.
Indriki, message, marudaliyada.
Today's message is, "Do not deny."
Endasoonlalaylo, oru viswasye, kaila, bible, thukittabharag, saalravareke, avam, marudalikkevai, kudada.
A child of God, after he takes up the Bible in his hand, until the time of his death, he should not deny.
Eppudi, ortan, kalyanam, kettinabharag, kadesavari, saagaravareke, avarana, ennada, svolva, avarana, unadhey, manavin, svolva, na, svolmatana?
Even after a person getting married, until the death, point of death, he would say that, "This is my wife."
Saagaravareke, avarana, yar, ah, manave.
Until the time of his death, it is the wife.
Adu vola, nee, ennagib, bible thukunayav, annelarundhu, nee, marudalikkevai, kudada.
So likewise, until the, from the time that you have taken the Bible in your hand, you should not deny.
Indha sabainudaya tanmai ennada?
What is the nature of this church?
Idu, oru, very, belasaliyana, sabakadada.
So this is not a very strong church.
Adu, oru, simpson pola, elavatla, kandamruthuthukutha, belan, ulasabai, kadada.
This is not a church with strength like Samson or the Unicorn.
Puridavunka?
Do you understand?
Illa, goliathavari, oru, jayjandi, figure, ulav, aalung, kadada.
Or it is not a man, a man like, a jajanti figure like Goliath.
Andha sabai, kirmanda, belan, ebripattada?
What was the strength of the church?
Cholena, evvela, belan?
What's?
Konjanam, belan.
A little strength.
Anan, andha, konja, belathle, adu, devanam, marudilai, amma, jivana, kuduthada?
But with the little strength that it had, it did not deny God, but lay down its life.
Onakkalikaappattakirupak, konjamaga, kudala.
The grace given to you might be little.
Onakkalikaappattaviswasyam, konjamaga, kudala.
The faith given to you might be small.
Onakkalikaappattaparisutham, konjamaga, kudala.
Holiness given to you might be very trivial.
Andha, konjathra, nee, unmayana, irukkano.
But you got to be faithful in the little, what you have.
Onakkavasadi, vaipugal, devan, konjamagutupar.
The Lord might have given some conveniences to you, a little bit.
Ah, yadav, sapthatukke, teavail, kudukkala.
So whatever food you require, the Lord.
Yen, sapthatukka, adigamaga, oru, aayar, roya, estha, kadigiramari, devan, kudukkala.
The Lord might have given, provided you, maybe, a thousand rupees more than your requirements.
Illa, sapthatukke, nee, tharumathram, olavana, irukkala.
Or perhaps, you are a person struggling for even daily food.
Ee, eppudi, oru, padele, devan, pillavale, nattukrada?
What is the Lord leave the children in such a path?
Idil, avam, unmayana, irukkara, na, abidingra, oru, test.
It is a test to check whether he is faithful in what is given.
Indha testle, nee, passa, hana.
You got to pass this test.
Abidipasa, idena?
If you pass likewise.
Onne, anegathin, male, adigariyaga, avaravai, pa.
And he should make you a ruler upon many.
Ippani, anegathukka, adigariyam, aariyara.
Now, we have become a ruler over many.
Indha anegathla, nee, unmayana, irukkambadu?
When you are faithful in the many.
Innum anegakariyinkal, unmale, unmela, viswasyavaidhuthu, devan, kudukrada.
So the Lord keeps his faith on you and gives more things, more responsibilities in your hand.
Marudalithal, ennbadu, vilchi, in, adayala.
And therefore, enjoying everything is a sign of fall.
Inneki, andha sabai gal, la, orudaran, da, marudalithada.
So because those churches just denied once.
Anan, namil, anegal, ovur, nimidamu, marudalikrav.
But many of us deny every moment.
Marudalithal, ennbadu, thadumathathin, adayala.
So denying is an experience of struggling.
Oru, viswasye, marudalikrav, nusolna.
If a believer staggers.
Avan, the spiritual standard, ennasiyada, koreyapovudhu, abidinana artho?
The meaning is, a spiritual standard is depleting.
Oru, oolyakara, marudalikrav, nusolna.
If a worker of God is denying.
Avunudaya, oolyathle, avan, yarangi, thaalvai, nokki, yarangaramikrav, naththa.
And he is heading downwards in the ministry.
Onne, traasala, vichin, niruthu, bakrara, nee, menne, menne, tekel, uparshin, nee, traasile, niruthu, kaanappatai, nee, koreyaa, vana, vana, kaanappatai.
So he places you in the balance, and he weighs you, saying that, "Menne, menne, tekel, uparshin," which means that, "You are weighed and found wanting."
Anan, indha sabai, patti, svolrada?
Talking about this church, he says.
Unkiriyegale, naan, arindhirukkara.
I know your words.
Onakkukonja, belan, irundho.
You had little strength.
Yen, naamaththi, nee, marudaliyamal.
However, you do not deny anything.
Yen, vasanaththi, nee, kaiikonda, budina.
Because you kept my word.
Naan, unakay, daavakeer, thiranda, vasalai, naan, vakeer.
I place before you an open door.
Adha, yendha, pisas, o, seyvenay, o, yavalo, manushan, o, sandram, o, mandram, o, edhu, boodam, mudiyada.
No witchcraft, no devil, no magic, no spell of magic can stop it.
Inneki, namukkisela, kariyinkal, padipattak, moodi, irudun, artho?
So today, certain things we try to do.
Inneki, nalarnam, arukkun, aalake, failurea.
So what we do, might appear good today, but tomorrow, it's a failure.
Adu, oru vela, on jappathla, tharundhadarkala, leni, on, moirti, le, tharundhadarkala, anad, devan, tharandha, ennasiyam, adha, boodha, viddam, adha.
Perhaps, it is opened by your endeavor or by your efforts and prayer, but if the Lord opens the door, no one else will shut it.
Een?
Why?
Andha thiravukal, yattaruke?
The keys are in the.
Avar, kailaruke.
It was in hand.
Avur, pootitaruna, avar, da, tharakano.
If he locks, he should only open.
Avur, tharandharuna, yar, da, boodano?
If he opens, he should only shut it.
Appidipattad, devanai, nam, vaythirukkumboodhu, nengal, een, marudalikrira?
When you have such a God, why should you deny?
Indha, marudalithal, ennbadu, inneki, kristva, vilakathle, oru, sarva, sadarname, ha, mari, vudarada?
Denying is becoming very habitual, very normal among the Christians.
Pedhur, pedhurva, irukku, varai, marudalikkevillai.
Peter, as long he was Peter, he did not deny.
Anan, eppa, simona, marana, anan, appadu, marudalipounda, garada.
But the moment he became Simon, he started denying.
Illa, vattal, marudalithodan, na, unadhey, payar, yada, mari, irchi.
Or in other words, once he denied, his name became.
Pedhurunday, pedhurunday, palay, payar, ennada?
What was the old name of Peter?
Simon.
Simon.
Simon, ennada?
What does it mean by Simon?
Nanal.
It's weed.
Ah, idu, da, unadhey, palay, life, o, avunudaya, palay, payaro, avunudaya, lifestyle, o, abidharundu.
And that was the nature of his old life, that was his name as well as his lifestyle.
Abidinenna?
What does it mean?
Indhi, vandha, indha side, chanchikwa, andha side, vandha, andha side, chanchikwa, kathuthukon, tanneki, ethavari, aadiidhar, garada, naan, nanal, daya, tanmai.
Weed, a bull rush is something which will move with the face of the wind, with the direction of the wind, if something has to happen this side, he will wave this side, if something has to happen the other side, you should go the other way.
Adhalata, payar, vikkamboodhu?
That is why, when you keep.
Katharun, unkene, ennabir, vichara?
What did the Lord name him as?
Nee, oru, kal.
You are a stone.
Nee, oru, parai.
You are a rock.
Adhalata, unkene, name, karakta, vichara.
That is why he gave him the right name.
Namal, ungalapu, puddusha, payar, la, kodanikala, vikrav, orutunukum, puriyadanga. Keta, adha, arab, arab name, adi, greek, la, abidivadu, hebrew, la, abidivadu, nengi, tamilla, abidivadu, ne, avukka, mettela.
Abidinana? So people are giving names today, that they say, "It's an Arabic name, it's called a Greek name," so even they don't know the meaning of it in Tamil.
Christians, kuda, numerical, style, vikrav.
So even Christians are also naming after the numer.
Ah, ebadi, vichcha, abidu, abidu, vichcha, ebadi, la, maathikide, varan.
So based on numerology, they want to keep the names like this and that.
Avar, puriyamana, avrul.
Beloved ones, it's wrong.
Namudhey, payar, parayaga, marav.
Our name should become a rock.
Avunudaya, life, oru, uruthithanmai, amatthu, da, kathar, unkene, pedhur, keba, patrose, peter, idanadhey, mulu, arthame, ennada? Nee, oru, kal, nee, oru, parai.
So the meaning of the Lord, the Lord giving names to Peter as Kefaz and Patrose, that is called Peter, the meaning is that he should be like a rock, a stone.
Pedhurva, vichav, avudhey, statement, ennada?
When he was Peter, what was his statement?
Matthi, twenty-six, thirty-five. Avudhey, pedhurva, vichav, avudhey, varthay, ennada?
What was his word when he was Peter?
Lord, even if I have to die, I will die, Lord. That was the words of Peter. But what was the words of Simon? In Matthew's Gospel. Chapter twenty six, verse seventy. See what his state is now? Concerning this in John. John, chapter twenty one. Verse fifteen. Now both the names are given, Simon, Peter. Earlier it was Simon. Until the time he denied, his name was. After he denied, his name was. Simon, Peter. Simon, Peter, now it has come to a fifty fifty state. In the same verse, his name has become. So dear Reed. That's how it has become. Because when you deny, your life is changed. A test call, a denying will happen continuously in Christian life. We cannot say when this test will happen. It will keep on coming. This test of denying will come to a believer as well as a worker until the point of his death. I will explain more clearly. If you go to apply for a driving license. And they will ask you to get some certificate. Medical certificate. So after you get the, provide the certificate, you will get the license. So they will give you about twenty years span. And once you become forty. Afterwards, they will give you only for five years validity. Why? You have to get a test certificate for your eyes. So as your age increases, the validity of the certificate will decrease because they will, they want to ensure that you have a proper eyesight to drive. Likewise. So you have to have undergo a fitness test every time, every moment in the Christian life, even until the last moment, you have to undergo this test. Immediately you will say, why should the Lord permit this? It's not so. So through your eyes, you might appear to be a saint, but you have to find out what is shortfall in your life. Until the time that you fall sick, you can speak boldly about divine healing, but until when that sickness comes in, then that's the test of standing in faith. So why did the Lord afflict the people and lead them? Lead them in wisdomness. And what do we read in Deuteronomy? The Lord says that to know your heart, that you might know yourself, I have led you in this path. Deuteronomy eight two. You should first of all understand what is weak in your heart and therefore you have to understand that I am weak in this aspect and I have to correct it. Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty six, verse thirty four, the Lord very clearly says that your standard is very weak, not just once, but three times you will deny. The Lord pinpoints to him, saying that your Christian life is only in words, but it's not in strength. But in the next verse, he says that even if I have to die, I will not deny. But only God knows what was his standard. So that is why that he might understand the Lord, take him to the path of denying. So some people, if you find, they will find fault with others, accuse others. There is no need anything. So when some person is sleeping during the message, he will say, pastor is speaking like this, but this person is sleeping. One person came and told me in YMCA meeting. So one person came at the YMCA meeting and told me. So one person came and sat by me and he was a believer. So from the time he came and sat down, he was only fidgeting with the phone, so I seeing him, I lost the presence of God. Likewise. So he will say that pastor is speaking like this and he will just wake up the other person. The moment you tap, the spirit of slumber will come into you and the other person will be clear. Most of them are like this. Many are complaining about others' children, saying that this boy is standing there, he was speaking over phone and this girl was standing there and doing like this. So but later on, whatever they spoke in reverses and come back to their own children. For about one hour and forty five minutes, he was preaching and all this one hour forty five minutes, he was just playing with the phone. Finally, when everyone was asked to stand up, at was that point in time, he put his phone in the pocket. That day, the subject was. So pastor, that day, I told that, so all your boundaries should have holiness. After hearing this, he cried for about fifteen minutes. So I rejoice, saying that at least at this last moment, he was sanctified and he went with crying. So until that point of death, for you and me, the Lord will keep this test of denying, even the devil will conduct this test. So even if he scored a ninety nine percentage, yet for at least this one person will you not fail, the devil will try to keep a test for that. But even if you have a little strength, you should not deny. If you deny, what will happen? You can deny here. But when you go and stand before the Lord in the presence of God, the Lord will deny you. Matthew ten thirty three. So today, for whatever reason, you might be denying, but still when you go to the kingdom of heaven, there the son of God will deny you before the father, saying, I do not know him, he is a worker of iniquity. And therefore, whatever activities of denial that you do in this earth will reflect directly in heaven. What does Saint Paul say about this? Second Timothy. Chapter two. The twelfth verse. Second Timothy two twelve. If you deny him, he will also deny you. Therefore, in the aspect of denying, we should be very careful. You should not deny your parents. Do not deny the church. You should not deny the truth. So first of all, if you deny, the first thing that will happen to you is the son will deny you. Secondly. If you deny, you are called the liar. Thirdly, the Bible says if you deny, you are the antichrist. So come with the Bible, with pen and notebook. So if you are a person who can buy hard, you have to stand, stood firm. First John, chapter two, verses twenty two and twenty three. What is mentioned there? If a man denies Christ, he is a liar. He that denied the son, he is antichrist. And who that denied the son, the father, he does not have the father. In these two verses, three accusations are made. When a person denies Lord Jesus Christ, he becomes a liar, he is called the antichrist and he does not have the father or the son. So what does it mean by denying? Failing to live according to the truth that you have heard, it's denying. So setting your life apart from the truth and the doctrine that you have heard and the anointing that you have received, that is called as denial. Now see how Peter denies. So he is, a woman asked. Your speech is very much similar to the speech of the Galileans. Immediately, he said. Who is that Galilean? I don't know that person. How can you say that? But the Lord brought him back to the ministry and gave him the ministry. That's a great marvel. Look at him. He made an abrupt denial, saying that I do not know him at all. Next, another trial. There he said. I do not know this man. See how simply he has just thrown him away. Then again, the third one. Again, he says. I do not know. And there was once all the waiting for him. Immediately, it grew. So historians say. So later on, Peter became a great minister of God. But whenever they call. Of course, he was a great minister of God, so when people see, touches shadow or touch him, immediately they are healed. But whenever he does the ministry of healing also, when he hears the cock crow, immediately he will be troubled. So every day morning, we have a cock crowing, that is alarm. Is it crowing? He was the one who was setting up the alarm, saying, Lord, wake me up early in the morning, I should pray, I should do this and that. But when the alarm goes, then they will say that, oh, get away devil. Three times in a night. On what day? So how many, how many days? How many days? Within twelve hours, it happened. Just calculate that this is. So just calculate as twelve into three and twelve hours into three and how many years believers you were and just calculate. Just imagine. So today, how many of us deny likewise and carry the Bible alone? So he that denied is a liar. He that denied is an antichrist. So he that denied before the father will deny. He that denied, this don't have the father. When you read the fourth words of Jude. In the fourth words of Jude. What is mentioned about them that deny? They just topple the words of God. And they topple the grace. Who are they? They are ungodly. And they are the one who enter through the sideways. These people deny God. So therefore, the one that denies, the one who creeps in unawares and one who is ungodly, he is, he does not. Therefore, the Bible says. Do not deny. So let us consider, how many times have we denied in our life? When you deny, once again. We deny holiness. We deny righteousness. So when we deny, we also set a deliverance the sin. Acts of the Apostles, chapter three, verses thirteen and fourteen. So you have denied the holy and righteous one. Because you denied what happened. So a murderer is being delivered. What does it mean? So when you deny, then sin is delivered from you and it becomes very gigantic. My God's holy name be glorified. Today, this denying, or the process of denying. May God to understand this properly. So about the church, it is mentioned that because you have kept my word and not denied. So whenever you deny, you're denying his name. Or you are rejecting his name. You say that I do not know. So you do not know the truth? You do not know how you should keep the faith? You do not know how you should beat your wife? So you do not know that you should not commit mistake with others' wives? Even the C S A person knows. Do not, do not know the ten commandments? So only if we follow the ten commandments, we are the right Pentecostal. So very clearly, it is mentioned about the ten commandments. The reason is they are unable to follow. What is the reason? There is no law. So that is why when Christ came, he said that you love God, all these things shall be set free. What you do not know. So if I sit down, about hundred people will come forward to preach about denial and you'll say the pastor does not know this verse, but I will teach about this verse. So you are supposed to be teachers. You can speak in a moment. But. So but having known about denial, we are still denying. Yet being warned that he shall deny three times, he said, I will not deny, but went again and he come denied all three times. Do not turn the scriptures. Do not stern the word of God. Second Peter, chapter two, when we read. It is mentioned about a group of people who deny God. And they will just topple the words of God. Second Peter, chapter two, verse one. If a person is heretic in his words, that means that he is denying. Do you understand? So when I got transferred from Chennai to Madurai. So but an ananik believer, he came to Madurai to visit me. So he was from a RC background. So there was one of his close letter who studied theology and he was just secured the degree and came out. And they also had ordained a feast for him. And they also had ordained a feast for him. So of course, he was a young boy, but he has passed through the six years of studies and he has now secured the degree. So after he was ordained, then he was brought to me, saying that if you have to do the ministry well, you have to pray from my pastor, and therefore, he was brought to me. I was speaking to him for some time. It's only then after discussion, I understood that if he becomes the leader of the church, what will happen to the church? Because after little time, he said. He said, "You should not believe only the Bible, but you should also contemplate Darwin's theory." What does Darwin's theory say? What does the Bible say? What the Bible says is, "God created man out of the dust of the earth in his own image and likeness." But what does Darwin's theory say? Man evolved from monkeys. He's asked, saying, "What, why don't you contemplate this?" I asked, "Will you speak like this in the RC church?" Can you speak in a mass like this? He said, "I can speak, there's nothing wrong." Then he said to that incident where Jesus Christ converted the water into wine. Everybody was washing their feet. So he was comparing the dirty water where the feet were washed into the grape and into wine, and therefore, I was wondering what he had learnt all these six years. So two or three days before, I heard a news. I'm just talking about this heresies of stoning the word of God. What Job said was, "The Lord gave and the Lord has taken away." And he was refusing that word. The forty-second chapter. In the forty-second chapter, Job says that unknowingly I have spoken, and therefore, he is relating this to that verse. Job, chapter 2, Job says that the Lord has given, the Lord has taken away, praise be to the name of the Lord in the first chapter. 21. 21, it says, "God gave and took." But in 42, I said, "I will tell you." So they are just toppling the word of God just like that, they are just relating the verses which Job spoke in the first chapter and the forty-second chapter, and saying that what Job said in the first chapter, he is disagreeing with his own statement, and people are clapping hands for that and whistling also for that. So the same people, person having the same kind of spirit, as he said, do not look at the hair, but look at the spirit of God inside. So do not look at the garment he was wearing, because he was wearing glittery garments, shining garments, but the Lord's spirit of God from inside, he is lifting up the banner. Looking at these people who are wearing fluorescent garments, they were very happy, saying that pastors' priest according to our desire, and therefore, they were shouting and whistling. The people having hair like gypsies, they were just whistling, saying that this is the right message today. Well, I would want it's wrong. We have to follow the words of God as it is. Today, you might topple the words as you like, according to the situation. But you cannot go and stand before the Lord. So he, the Lord will not have time to discuss all sixty years issues with a person, and therefore, a person of God says that, when once a person goes to the presence of God, automatically, the presence will give the judgment based on his life. We should be very careful. So recently, teachers like this have come up in full swing. So even if you sit down, even if you do not shake, automatically, your tissues. These are false teachers. So please go home, make your children read through over and over again, Second Peter, chapter 2, the first three verses. If a person is heretic about the word of God, that is denying. When we turn to Hebrews, chapter 6. What is mentioned there? When you read chapter 6, verses 4, 5, and 6. If a person having a standard life. If he falls down from that level, he is denying God. What does it mean? A person who is used to pray for one hour, now reduces the hour of prayer, that means that he is denying God. If a person ministers for two hours every day, but now he reduces the amount of time that he spends in ministry, then that means he is denying, is it not right what I say? Please read. Hebrews, chapter 6, verses 4, 5, and 6. There is no need for others to crucify Lord Jesus Christ, but the moment that you decrease your prayer life, that you fall away from your faith, you will fall away from your holy life, that means that immediately you are stepping down from your spiritual standard, thereby crucifying Jesus Christ on the cross. In the worldly stage, if you see. A person who wants to ride the bike, cycle, what he desires. All his prayers are? A two-wheeler. A person going by two-wheeler, he has fallen so many times, had met with accidents so many times, before he desires a four-wheeler. So in the world, if the people look for development and increasement in their life, so why do you desire a development in your standard? Hebrews 6:6 very clearly says, when you deplete in your spiritual life, that means you are crucifying Lord Jesus Christ and you are putting him to open shame. One Timothy, chapter 5, verse 8. Dear Saint Paul talks about the falling away of faith. So what does it mean by denying the faith? Taking medicine is just one portion of denying faith. So that is an experience of sublime state. So divine healing is a very important portion of the backbone of doctrine. But there is something called as the foundation. And there is a foundation. So when we first deny faith. So taking medication and thereby denying faith is the last state. One Timothy, chapter 5, verse 8. You have a wife, you have a husband, you have two or three or four children, and you have a brother, sister, your parents, you have to inquire them. Why not the child go to school? Why did not the son go to school? Why has the marks come down? So why is the girl? So why she is not going at the right time and coming back at the right time? So why he is not sleeping at the right time, why he is not waking up at the right time? Why he is despising the presence of God? Why he is not giving the importance to the works of God? Why he is not studying well? Why he is not doing his job well? So why is his countenance fallen? A father and mother should carefully watch this. You have to inquire. Son, what happened today? What has befallen you today? A king was looking at the servant who was pouring water, and he said, "Why is your countenance fallen today? Please come down," and he enquires. And what, what did the husband of Anna say? What did he say? Why are you not eating? Why are you troubled? Did you not ask? What has happened to you? I am there for you. Why are you grieved? See, very, how clearly he speaks. So is the husband and wife talking like this today? So he has not had food today, let him be like, let him fast and starve for at least one day. So without eating, he is not gonna die. That is how the world is today. Your husband has come. Will you not serve food? No, he is having hands, isn't he? Let him eat. That is what is happening in every house today, and that is why Pentecostal is standing in the middle of the street. How was the old in Pentecost? I'm not talking about Tamil Nadu. In Abraham's house, who was Sarah? Did he say, "Hi Abraham?" Today, that's what is happening in most of the houses. Have you spoken to your husband? He is a term, yeah, I have spoken. I have spoken to John, it's only two months after the marriage, she is telling, I have spoken to John, but he is not speaking well. What did Sarah say to Abraham? My Lord. Is it not so? What do they call in Tamil Nadu? Stone or a grass, it is the husband. Today, people, do they see that? If you wish to come, otherwise, you just go your way. In church itself, we can witness how people's countenance change when they go by two-wheeler. So recently, I heard a news. The pastor spoke like this. So after the meeting is over, the husband asks the wife, "Do you have pastor's number?" No. No, I have a doubt. What happened day before yesterday, the pastor is retreating as a test, then who has reported to him? No, you have got the number from someone and you have informed everything to him. So she said. He said, "I have never heard God speaking like this today." This is happening in Tamil Nadu. Have you enquired your family? Have you enquired your family this morning? You desire the Lord should inquire you. Is it not so? The Lord should inquire. Work is of God must inquire. Relatives must inquire. Whom have you enquired this morning? So if a man provide not for his own house and especially for his own family, then he has denied the faith and is worse than an infidel. It is similar to denying God. Denying faith life, it shows. You should speak. They might be griefs. They might be bitternesses. Immediately. So you gotta settle all your problems before the sun goes down, that's what the Lord says. You have to pay attention. So by the, by this desk, you have to settle your personal problems, with all your spiritual problems, you have to settle before ten o'clock, before you go to bed, because in my bed, I sought for my beloved. So in the same day, if you ask ten times pardon to God, that's okay. But you have to keep this mind, retain this mind of asking for forgiveness. And there are certain saints who will say that you ask pardon from the Lord, do not ask from me. When they come and ask pardon to you, you should not speak like as though you are a brilliant, excellent person, but when they say, you have to also say that, because I spoke like this, you have rebutted like this. The first person who asks pardon is humble. The person who asks pardon first is divine. The person who asks pardon first is gracious. Let him come and speak to me, let's see. He will never come. Then what will you do? So you will again find fault with him, saying that because he has committed the mistake. You have to inquire your family. You have to inquire your children. What is happening? Where have you gone? So you are not doing any job, then why are you dressing up going? You have to answer the questions that I asked. You are not going to college? You are not going to church? So all these three places, you are not visiting, but why are you dressing up like a bridegroom and you are just taking the vehicle, filling up fuel, and roaming around? You have to either study. Or go to work. Or go to the presence of God. So if you do not go to these three places, you have to stay back on knees at the home. Why are you going out? Why are you roaming around? So everyone has this problem. There are two or three in the house. So certain believers, even the head of the family, they do not go to work, but at the right time, they will start, get ready and come out. Therefore, in the spiritual life, you have to inquire your own family. Second Timothy, chapter 3, verse 5. What is mentioned here? They put on the form of godliness, but deny the power thereof. What is the form of godliness? Is it removing, shaving of your mustache and beard and wearing white and white? Removing the ornaments? They are thinking that these are godliness. So therefore, all the MLAs, all the MPs, they are wearing white garments, it's called as the minister's white. Does it mean that everyone will go to Zion or Jerusalem? White and white is not holiness, it is just the base of holiness. In other words, we can say that that is a sign of victorious life. At the same time, wearing white and white, you should not deny the power thereof. Do not think that because you remove the jewels, you will go to heaven. But you are removing the jewels, but you are fighting at home. You have removed the mustache, but he is beating up your wife. I believe that you will understand the point that I am making. Therefore, you have put on the form of godliness, but you have denied the power thereof. You have to run around and labor. You should not put on the form of godliness, rather, put on the power of the godliness. You have to stand for divine healing. You have to stand in the truth and doctrine. You should not deny the power thereof. That is why a few days back, I. Job 29. What he says?
What he says?
தேவனுடைய காப்பாத்தி வந்த அந்த நாட்களின் சீரிருந்தால் நலமாயிருக்கும். அதே போல, தேவனுடைய ஆசிர்விதித் தந்த செல்வ நாட்களின் சீரிருந்தாலும் நலமாயிருக்கும்.
So he says that the days wherein the Lord blessed me or preserved me and the days of prosperity which the Lord has blessed me with, if it is there, that is fine.
ஒருதன் திருகரசன் சொல்லுறா?
A man prophesied.
அல்ல, அபிஷேகத்துல நிரம்புறா?
He was filled with mighty anointing.
மட்டும் ஒரு மூன்று லட்சு ரூபா கடன் வச்சிருக்கிறான் சொன்னா, அந்த தேவபக்தியின் என்ன இல்ல? வேச்சாப்படுது.
So but he says that he has three lakhs dead, then the godliness is in vain.
அதே நடத்துல நல்ல வசதி, வாய்ப்பு, காரு, நல்ல பொன்னம் பொருள் இருக்கு, அபிஷேகமே இல்ல. அதோ பெயில்யோர் மாடல.
At the same time, he is having all kind of riches, all kind of property and but still he does not have anointing, then there is no use of that.
அபிஷேகமும் இருக்கணும், ஆசிர்வாதமும் இருக்கணும்.
You should both have anointing as well as blessing.
ஏசாயத்திற்கு திருகரசன் தெரியிருக்கிறது, உன் பிள்ளைகளின் மேல், இல்லாத உன் சந்தானத்தின் மேல், என் ஆவியையும் ஊற்றுவேன், ஆசிர்வாதத்தையும் ஊற்றுவேன்.
That is where in the prophetical book of Isaiah, it is mentioned that upon your children, upon your descendants, I will pour out my spirit as well as my blessing.
ரெண்டு திமதி, மூனாம் திகாரத்துல நீங்க பாக்கும்பொழுது.
Second Timothy chapter three.
ஒன்னாம் திகாரத்துல, ஒன்னாவசனத்துலிருந்து ஐஞ்சாவசனத்துக்குப் பத்தம்போதோ, பெய்ருவதோ, பாவங்கள் சுட்டிகாட்டப்பட்டுருக்கறது.
Verses from one to five is mentioned about opposed thirteen faults.
நீ தேவபக்தியின் வேசத்தைப் போட்டு, இந்த பாவங்களெல்லாம் உள்ள வச்சிக்கிட்டேனா, அதுந்தே வெலனை நீ மற்றுளிக்கறா?
So if you put on the form of godliness and having these faults within you, then you are denying the power thereof.
தீத்து மொதலாம் திகார, ஆராவசனத்தைப் பார்க்கும்பொழுது.
Titus chapter one verse six.
அங்கே அறிகே உண்டு, கிரியை இல்லை.
And there is confession but no works.
ஒரு தேவனுடைய பிள்ளை அறிக்கே சேர்த்து மாத்ரமல்ல.
A child of God not only should make confessions.
அது செயல்ல வரணோ.
But it should come in their action.
இன்னைக்கு அனேகர் கப்படிப்பட்ட வாழ்க்கை இல்ல.
Today many do not have such a life.
ஒன்னு பத்து நாறு சொல்லிருக்கறது.
And one sixteen says.
தேவனை அறிந்தோம் இன்று அவர்கள் அறிக்கப்பணுகிறார்.
They profess that they know God.
ஆனால் கிரியைகளினாலையோ, அவரையும் மற்றுளிக்கிறார்கள்.
But in their works, they deny him.
இவர்கள் எப்படிப்பட்டவர்கள்?
What kind of people they are.
அனுர்க்கப்படத்தக்கவர்கள்.
They are abominable.
கிளிப்படியாதவர்கள்.
Disobedient.
எந்த நக்கிரீயும் செய்ய ஆகாதவர்கள்.
And unto every good work reprobate.
எவளும் தெளிவா வசனந் சொல்லுது நீ பாருங்க.
See how clearly the word of God professes.
தேவன் எங்களுக்கு தேவ அண்டவரு தரியும், வசனந் தரியும், சபோத தரியும், பாஸ்டர் தரியும், இதெல்லாம் கரெக்ட் ரொம்ப இசியான சொல்லக்கூடிய வார்த்தைகள்.
So they can very easily say that I know God, I know Pastor, I know the Church, I know the Word of God. These are very easy things that they can say.
ஒருவேளை கடந்த காலங்களில் பயத்தினீரோ, சூன்னலைகளிலோ, நீங்கள் ஆண்டவரை மற்றுளித்திருக்கலாம்.
Perhaps during the past is because of fear or because of situations, you might have denied God.
இந்த மற்றுளிக்க வைக்கறதுக்கு இன்னோர் சக்தி இருக்கு.
And there is another power for this denying.
அது தான் ஆசிர்வாத.
That is blessing.
அவ்வளைதான?
Is it not so?
நம்ம விசுவாசிகள் ஒரு சிலர் வந்து நார்மலா இருக்குறவுக்கு நல்லா இருக்கற.
So our believers, as long as they are normal, they are okay.
பத்தாயிரம் சம்பளம் வாங்கும்பொழுது, அவர்கள் பாத்திக்கென்ன கரெக்டா கூடத்துக்கு வந்துரா.
When they earn about ten thousand rupees salary, they will come to the meeting regularly.
அதே சம்பளம் ஒரு லட்சம் மாறிவிச்சுன்னா, இவன காணுமே.
But when the salary becomes one lakh, they are missing.
நம்ம ஜபிக்கறது எப்படி திரிமா?
Do you know how we pray?
அண்டவரே, வருமை, கஷ்டம், கடன், தரத்துற, சாப, எல்லாத்தை எடுத்துருங்க, அண்டவரே. எங்க ஜனங்கள் செலிப்பா மாறுங்க, அண்டவரே. கத்திரை நம்புகிறவனோ? செலிப்பா, எப்படிலான்னு நம்ம ஜபிச்சா? இவர் சர்ந்நு போறங்க. அது போறா அப்படியே போயிறாங்க.
So we are praying that all the penury, all the poverty, all difficulties, all the problems and debts of the people, it should be removed. Our people should be blessed and prosperous according to your word. But once they are blessed, they are disappearing.
இதுக்குதான் நீரிமுடியோல சாலோமன் சொல்லுறாரு.
That is why in Proverbs Solomon says.
முப்பதாம் திகார, ஒன்பாதாவசனத்துல.
Chapter thirty verse nine.
நான் பரிபூரணம் அடைகிறதினால், தேவன் யாரின்று உம்மை மற்றுளித்துவடக்குடாது.
So lest I be full and deny saying, "Who is Lord?"
எப்படி? பணன் ஜாஸ்தியாயிட்டாலும், நம்மாளங்களுக்கு பிரச்சனை தாக.
So if money abounds, that is a problem for our people.
நான் ஒரு விசுவாசிய பாத்துக்கேட்ட.
I met a believer.
ரொம்ப பெரிய பணகர் நான் மாறிட்ட.
So...
ரொம்ப வசதியாளாவன்.
He was a very rich person.
அது எப்படி சொல்லுறது?
How can I say that?
அவருடைய சோத்த கோவர்மெண்டும் முடக்கிட்ச்சிங்க.
The government has taken away his property.
யாருடைய சோத்த?
Who's property?
நான் அறிகிடி சொல்லுவேன் ஒராள.
I will talk about this person.
நான் உங்களுக்கு சொல்லிருக்கற.
I have told about this person.
அதாவது நான் ஒரு வீட்டுக்கு போனேன், ஆஸ்பிட்டர் சிட்டில் இருந்த. அவன் ஒன்னுமே இல்ல, மற்றந்தா, திரிபினான் போவ்பொழுது, அந்த கன்வெஞ்சனையா அவந்தா நடத்துன. அப்படின்னு சொன்னனா?
Have I told you about this person? When I went to his house, it was a hospice sheet and there was not even a map to sit down, but later on he conducted a convention itself.
ஆனா ஒரு டைம் வந்துபொழுது, ரைட் வச்சு, CBA ரைட் வச்சு, மொத்த சோத்தையா, அவருக்குருந்து ஏன்னூறு ஏகர, என்னூறு ஏகர, அவளும் ப்ளாக் ஆய்ச்சு. செத்தும்பெட்டான்.
But later on, when the time came in about eight hundred acres of land that he possessed.
அப்படின் வசதி தேவனுக்கு இருக்கற.
The Lord gave him so much of wealth.
பாயங்கரமான அளவுக்கதியமான வசதி.
So exorbitantly, he was blessed.
ஆனா, அது கரெக்டா அந்தால் என்ன செய்ல? பிள்ளைகளுக்கு மனவிக்கின்னு செட்பணாம வச்சு, கடைசில எல்லாம் பினாமிலேயும் பாதி போய், ஒன்னுல உம்பிடா.
He did not first.
இன்னைக்கு அவங்க பிள்ளைகளுக்கு ஒன்னுமிலாத ஒரு கண்டிஷன். எப்படி இருக்குன்னு யோசிப்பாரு.
So he did not. He did not allocate it properly to his wife and children, but he has bekept everything in Benami name and therefore he has lost, had to lose everything. Now his children have absolutely nothing.
ஆனா நான் ஒரு நாள் அவந்து பேசும்பொழுது.
One day when I spoke to him.
இப்படி செஞ்சிருக்கலாமே, அப்படி செஞ்சிருக்கலாமே என்னு சொன்ன.
I was giving ideas saying you could have done like this and that.
நான் அப்படி செய்றது இல்ல. யா, யா மைன்ட் பணத்துக்குப் பின்னால போவது கூடாதுன்னா, நான் ரொம்ப கண்ட்ரோல் பண்ணியுச்சிருக்கேன.
So he said, "I was just keeping my mind under control that I should not go behind money."
நான் கொஞ்சம் ஸ்லிப்பாய்ட் அன்ன, நா, பணன் இருக்கு, சோத்து இருக்கு, ஆனா யா மைன்ட் எதுல் போயோ.
I have wealth and riches.
தேவசமோதுக்கு போனோ, அது மட்டும் முக்கிய.
So he said, "I have to go to the presence of God. That is more important for me."
வசதி கூட ஒரு சிலரா மற்றுளிக்க வைக்குது.
So even riches and wealth makes a person deny.
அப்படி எத்தனைவரு வேலைகட்சி, ஒன்னே கல்யாண கட்டுந்து, ஒன்னே இப்படிலாம் போனவங்கள் நீங்க பைபில்ல பா, சபைக்குள்ள எத்தனைவரு பாக்கலாங்க. என் நானே சொல்வ.
So you can find so many examples, even I can talk about, those people have gotten employment as well as marriage and they departed from the church.
பைபில்ல சொல்லிருக்கு.
What does the Bible say?
ஒருதனுக்கு கல்யாண ஆயிட்டு.
A person got married.
ஒருதனுக்கு நெலா வாங்கிட.
A person purchased land.
ஒருதனுக்கு மாடு வாங்கிட.
A person purchased a note.
இப்ப அவனுக்குப் பூட்டான் என்ன சொன்ன?
Now when they called, what they said?
சொல்லுங்க, நம்மாளுங்க.
What did they say?
கல்யாண கட்டுந்து அவனுக்குப் பூட்டாங்க, விருந்துக்க அப்பான் நான் என்ன சொன்ன? நான் இப்பன்னா கல்யாண கட்டிருக்க. நான் வரவே மட்ட. இப்படியே பின்னுப்புன்னால போனவங்கள் நம்மாள் சபைல பாதி வருதுக.
A person is just.
கல்யாணத்தோடு சபை உட்டுபோனவந்தா.
With wedding, they disappear from the church. When you call them, they say, "I just got married. I am just busy."
இன்னொரு தஞ்சனா, நான் மாடு வாங்கிட.
The other person said, "I purchased a note."
மாடு வாங்கன கோயிலுக்கு வரக்கூடாத. பால் கற்றுக்கிற, ட்வென்டிபட் ஹோஸ் பால் கற்றுக்கிறுருக்குற.
Does it mean that when you purchase a note, you should not come to the church? Are you milking through twenty-four hours?
அதுக்குதான் நீ காட்டணும், அது பாக்கணும், எங்க அம்மா பாக்கல, யா மனவி பாக்கல, நான்தான் பாக்கணும். நீ மாடுடைய போய், மாடவே அவர்தான் என்ன பிரச்சனை? பற்றலும் வரணுல்ல.
My wife.
அதுக்குதான் உனக்கு எத கூட்டாது? உனக்கு ஜீவன், ஜீவ, ஜீவனுக்கேது அவகே ஜீவா அலரமாது எத கூட்டாது? இத கூட்டாது. எங்கியர் மாடு வாங்கிட்டே? இவர் எங்க வரமாட்டிட்டா? இன்னும் நூறு மாடு வந்தா?
He has purchased about five buffalo's and he is not able to come, giving so many excuses and reasons. The Lord has given it as a sustenance for his family to run, but when the Lord blesses him with hundred oxen or buffalo's, what will happen?
இன்னொருதனுக்கு ஒரு நெலா வாங்கிருந்தான்.
Other person purchased a piece of land.
நான் அக்தியமால அதைப் போய் பார்க்கும். அதியங்க ஓடியா போயுது. அங்கதான் இருக்கு.
So will the land run away? I have to urgently go and visit the land.
தேவசமோதுக்கு முக்கியத்தையும் குடுக்காம மற்றுளிக்காத.
Do not fail, deny the presence of God, not giving importance to the presence of God.
நான் சொல்ற, வீக்கிளி, ஒரு செவன் அவர் சயர்க்கோப்பு ஓதுக. தேவத்துக்கு ஓது.
Weekly seven hours you have to set aside for the Lord.
Morning, three hours.
Morning, three hours for service.
For two hours, kathiruput.
Two hours for the tarrying meeting.
Two hours Bible check.
Two hours for the Bible study.
இன்னும் ஒன்னை நீ கரெக்டா பண்ண.
You have to do it properly.
இந்த ஒன்னுக்கு ஒவ்வொன்னுக்குள்ளேயும் ஒவ்வொரு கண்டென்ட் இருக்க.
Because each and everyone has different content.
ஒன்னுக்குள்ளேயும் ஒவ்வொரு ஜீவன் இருக்க. அதத்தான் நான் சொல்லவறா.
So in each and every meeting, there is separate lives.
சபைக்குடலை விட்டுவிடுகிறவன், சபிக்கப்பட்டவன்.
He that forsaken the assembling of the church is cursed.
அப்ப சபைக்குடலுக்கு வந்துட்டா, எது போயிருது ஒன்னை உட்டு?
Therefore.
சாபம் போயிருது.
When you come to the assembling of the church, curse is automatically gone away.
Okay, கத்திரை ஆவி எங்க உண்டாங்க, விடுதலை உண்டு.
For where the spirit of God, there is liberty.
அப்ப காத்திருபுட்டுக்கு வந்தா, உனக்கு என்ன கிட்சிருது? விடுதலை கிட்சிருது.
When you come to a tarrying meeting, you get deliverance.
சத்யத்தை அறிவிருக்க, சத்தியம் உங்களை விடுதலையாக்க. அப்ப சத்யத்தை அறிவும் முடிது, ஜீவியத்தையும் உனக்கு விடுதலை கிட்சிருது.
He shall know the truth and the truth shall set you free. Therefore, when you come and know the truth, there is deliverance.
Brothers prayer, போ.
You go to brothers prayer.
அப்ப அவ்வளை என்ன இருக்க?
What is there?
சொல்லுங்க, சகோதரு ஒரு மித்த வாசம் மண்ணுவது. எத்தனை நம்மை, எத்தனை இன்போம் மானது.
So how goodly and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity? Go to fasting prayers.
அங்கே போனா, நீ என்ன நிரக்கோ?
If you go there, what happens?
இந்த விசாச, இந்த வ ஜாதி விசாசி எதுநாலா தான் போகோ? உபவாசத்தினோ, ஜபத்திலின்னா வெளியே போகோ.
This kind of devil does not go out except for prayer and fasting.
நாலு முனிச் சபத்துக்குப் போ.
So you go to four o'clock.
அதிகாலையில் என்னை தேடுகிறவன், என்ன கண்ட தேவன், காலைதோர அவருடைய கிருபைகள் புரிதாயிருக்கறது.
He that seeks early in the morning shall find me. Every morning his grace is new.
நைட் ஒரு முன்னாறு ஜோமன்.
You pray in one hour for the night times.
ஏசோடு, ஒரு முன்னினாறு விலித்திருக்கக்கூடாத.
Can't you not stay awake with Jesus for one hour?
சோதனைக்கு உட்படாது பொடி, ஒரு முன்னினாறு என்னோடு உட்ட ஜோமன்ங்கள்.
Watch and pray for one hour that you enter nor in temptation.
அப்ப ஒவ்வொரு ஜபத்தில் என்ன இருக்க?
Therefore, each and every prayer.
ஒவ்வொரு ஜீவன் இருக்க.
There is different life.
அதத்தான் நீ கரெக்டா பண்ணனும்.
That is what you have to do regularly.
நீ ஒன்னுமே பணாம, சந்தே மொன்னிங் சோவிஸ் only.
So if you do not do anything but you come only for Sunday morning service?
அப்ப ஒன்னே கொண்டு போய், பற்றலுத்துல ஒரு நாள் விட்டுட்டு, ஆர்நால் நரகத்துல உட்ட ஒதுக்குவியா?
So if they take you to heaven and leave for one day and the rest six days, they put you into hell with you, will it be okay?
அவ்வளைதான?
Is it not so?
அவரு.
It's wrong.
தேவனுக்கந்த டைத்த நீ குடுங்க.
You got to offer the time to God.
அந்த தேவனுக்கந்த டைம் குடுக்கும்பொழுது, தேவன் உனக்கு டைம் தருவா.
When you give the time to God, God will give his time to you.
அதனாலதான் வேதம் சொல்லுகிறது.
That is what the Bible says.
அவர்வதுக்கு கிரியை உண்டு, வரிபூரணம் அடைகிறதனாலும், ஒரு சிலர் நினைச்சிராங்க. தேவனை மற்றுளிக்கிறார்கள்.
And therefore, they have their work and therefore certain people deny God for this purpose.
உபாகமும், இருவத்தையுடைய நாபத்தியள்ள பாக்கும்பொழுது.
Deuteronomy twenty eight forty seven.
அங்கே சொல்லிருக்கறது.
It is mentioned there.
நீ பரிபூரணம் அடைந்திருக்கும்பொழுது.
So when you are in fullness.
நீ தேவனைத் தூதித் து, மகிழ்ச்சியோடும், கலிப்போடும், நீ அவரை சேவிக்கணும். இல்ல, உனக்கது வியாதியா மாறு.
So you have to praise God and with joy and gladness you have to worship God, otherwise it will become a sickness.
உபாகமும், இருவத்தையுடைய நாபத்தியள்ள நாபத்தியள்ள.
Deuteronomy twenty eight forty seven forty eight.
எவளும் நித்ரபந்தமான ஒரு நாள் வர்த்துக்குத் தல்லபடுகிறா?
So what miserable condition you are pushed into?
ஆனால் கத்திரை நீக்கு ஒன்னோடு பேசுவது.
Therefore, the Lord is speaking to you.
உனக்கு கொஞ்ச வெலன் இருக்க, அதிக வெலன் இருக்க, மற்றுளியாத.
So whether you have little strength or most strength, that's not a problem.
நீ மற்றுளியாமல் இருந்தால்.
If you deny not.
உனக்கு திரண்ட வாசல் உண்ட.
And the open gate is before you.
உனக்கு ஜனத்தைத் தருவேன்.
And I will give you people.
உனை சோதனைக்குத் தப்புவிப்பேன்.
I will cause you to escape temptation.
உனக்கு ஒரு கிரீடம் உண்டு.
There is a crown for you.
நான் உனை தூணாக்குவேன்.
I will make you a pillar.
என்னுடைய நாமத்தை நான் உன்மேல் எழுதுவேன்.
So I will write my name upon you.
இதுதான் யாரு குடுக்கப்பட்ட வாக்குதத்தா?
And this is the promise given to whom?
மற்றுளியாமல் இருக்கற உனக்கு குதேவனுக்கு குடுக்கற வாக்குதத்தா.
There is a promise which God gives to them that deny not.
அதுங்க, சரியானவுத்துல வெளங்கிக்கொளணும்.
You have to understand this properly.
உனக்கு கொஞ்ச வெலனை இருந்து, நீ என்னுடைய நாமத்தை மற்றுளியாமல்.
So because you had little strength, yet you did not deny my name.
நீ உன்னைக் காத்துக்கொண்டபடினா?
Because you have kept.
நான் உனக்கு திரண்ட வாசலை வைக்கற.
I place before you an open door.
சத்துர்களின் பிடிலை இருக்கற சாத்தான்டையை கூட்டத்திலிருக்கற ஜனங்களை நான் உனக்கு தருவேன்.
So I will give you the people who are in the hands of the clutches of the devil and enemies.
பூச்சகரத்திலுள்ள மனிதரிகளுக்கு வருகிற சோதனையிலிருந்து, நான் உனை தப்புவிப்பேன்.
So I will cause you to escape the temptation which will come upon the world.
உனக்கு ஒரு கிரீடம் இருக்கறது.
You have a crown.
உன்னை என்ன ஆலயத்திலே தூணாகமாற்றுவேன்.
I will make you a pillar in my temple.
என்னுடைய நாமத்தை, தேவனுடைய நாமத்தை நான் உன்மேல் எழுதுவேன்.
I will write my name, the name of God on you.
எல்லாருங்கங்களை மொடுவோ.
So let us all close our eyes.
இன்னைக்கு நீங்கள் மறுபடியும் அவரை நேசியிங்க.
Today you love God once again.
மற்றுளித்துப்போன பேதுரு, மறுபடியும் அவரை நேசிக்க ஆரம்பித்தான்.
Peter who denied and left God, he once again started loving him.
உன் சகோதரினை நேசி.
You love your brethren.
நீ அவருடைய நாமத்தை மற்றுளியாமல் வசனத்தைக் கைக்கொள்.
So you do not deny his name but keep his word.
எல்லாருங்கங்களை மொடுவோ.
Let us all close our eyes.
அமோனுதரம் மற்றுளித்து உடனே.
Three times after denying.
அந்த சேவல் கூவினது.
And the cockrue.
அவனுக்கு உடனே வெளியே வந்துட்டா.
Immediately he came out.
அந்த மற்றுளிக்கிற பிரசந்த விட்டு வெளியே ஓடியே வந்தா.
He ran out of the presence which denies.
எந்த சூன்னலைல அவனுக்கு அந்த மற்றுளிப்பு நடந்ததோ? பைபில்ல சொல்லுகிறது. அந்த எடத்தை விட்டு, வெளியே ஓடிய வந்தான்.
So the Bible says that whichever situation he would deny, he ran out of that place.
இங்கே போனா, அந்த பொன்னு வர்ற.
So if you go to this place.
இங்கே வந்த போர்ச்சேவகன் வர்ற.
In this place, another soldier.
இன்னொருதன் வந்து சொல்லுற.
And there was another person.
இப்படி எங்க போனாலும், அவனை மற்றுளிக்கிறதுக்கான் அந்த கிளைமெட்டா அப்படிதான் சூ மாறு.
The scenario in such a situation, wherever he goes, he has to deny.
அந்த சேவல் கூண உடனே.
But when the cockrue.
பேரு அங்கிருந்து வெளியே ஓடி வந்து, மற்றுளித்தின் மீத்தம், அவன் மனங்கசந்த அழுதான்.
Peter ran out of the place and because he denied, he cried bitterly.
இதுதான் ஏசுவா அவனைத் தேடிவர வைத்த அனுபவ.
So this is the experience of him saying, making Jesus.
எல்லாருங்கங்களை முடிமுடங்கள் படியுடுவோ.
Let us all close our eyes and.
ஒருவேளை உங்களே, நம்முடைய வாங்கில, கடந்த காலங்களில, பல சூன்னலைகளில, நாம் தேவனை, வசனத்தை, சபையை, சத்யத்தை, உவதேசத்தை, கிருபையை, அபிஷேகத்தை, பல விதங்களில் நாம் மற்றுளித்திருக்கலாம்.
So perhaps in our life due to situations, due to fear, because of so many things, truth, doctrine, the word of God and the work of God, the faith of God, we might have denied you to do various reasons.
உன்னுடைய வெளியரங்கமான, இல்லாத உன்னுடைய மறைமுகமான, ஒவ்வொரு தோல்வியுடைய அர்த்தமும் மற்றுளித்தல்.
So the meaning of every failure, either outwardly or inwardly, the reason is denial.
எத்தனைவரு அதை ஒதுக்கொள்ளறீங்க?
How many of you agree this?
ஒவ்வொரு தோல்வியும், ஒவ்வொரு பாவமும், ஒவ்வொரு மீருதலும், தேவனை மற்றுளித்திருந்துடைய ஆடையாளங்கள்.
So every failure, every sin, every transgression is a sign of denying God.
நான் விசுவா, நான் என்ன, எனக்கு எவ்வதுல என்ன கடைக்குத் திரிமா?
So do you know what I get?
மூன்றுதரம் மற்றுளித்து உடனே, யாரு கூவினது?
So three times after denial, who grew?
நான் சொல்ற, இப்ப சேவல் கூவிக்கிட்டுருக்குன்னு சொல்லற.
Now I am telling.
ஒன்று நிரமந்து சேவல் கூவிக்கிட்டே இருக்க.
So for about one and a half, how was the cock was growing now?
மனிக்கனக்காக கூவிக்கிட்டுருக்க.
For hours together.
நீ மற்றுளித்த சூன்னலை உட்டு வெளியேவா?
You come out of the situation where you deny.
ஒரு வசனம்.
One word.
அப்படி முலங்களை இருங்க.
Just kneel down.
Matthew, இருவத்தையா, ஏழுவத்தையாய்ந்த.
Matthew twenty six twenty five.
அங்கே என்ன சொல்லப்பட்டுருக்கறது?
What is mentioned there?
அவன் வெளியே வந்தான்.
He came out.
அப்படின்னு என்ன அர்த்த?
What does it mean?
அந்த சூன்னலைக்குள்ளே கடந்தேனா, நீ அங்கிருந்து மற்றுளிச்சிட்டு தான் இருப்ப.
So if you stay in the same situation, you will stay in the same condition.
அதே பெண் வருவா? அதே பெண் வருவா?
The same damsel will come.
நீ அவனோடு இருந்தாய்.
And you are with her.
இன்னொருதன் வருவா, நீ இவனோடு இருந்தாய்.
And the person will come and say, "You are with her."
இன்னொருதன் வருவா, உம்பேச் அப்படியே இருக்கறது.
And the person will say, "Your language is similar."
நீ அதறை இருக்கற வரைக்கும் மற்றுளித்து, 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 நீ அதுலயே அலிந்து போயிருவா?
As long as you stay in the same place, you will keep on denying and you will die and perish.
இப்ப வேதம் என்ன சொல்லுகிறது?
I doubt what the word of God say.
எங்கிருந்து வெளியே வந்துட்டா?
So where he has come?
மற்றுளிக்கிற சூன்னலையிலே, அந்த எடத்தை, அந்த சக்கம்ஸ்டஞ்சஸ் விட்டு வெளியே வந்துட்டா.
So he came out of the environment from where he denied God.
அந்த எடத்தில் நீ இருக்கற வரைக்கும் மற்றுளிச்சிட்டா இருப்ப.
As long as you stay in that place, you will keep on denying.
விடு, அந்த பிரன்ஷிப்பை விட.
You leave the friendship.
நீ ஒரு அடத்துல மீட்பொட்டு, அந்த எடத்தை, இனிமை அந்த எடத்துக்கு போகாத.
The place where you meet, do not go to the place again. The place where which is not the will of God, where you stand, where you sit and where you meet people, that is where the denial comes.
நீ மற்றுளிக்கிற அந்த சூன்னலை உட்டு வெளியேவா?
You come out of the situation whereby you deny.
இன்னைக்கு தேவனுடைய சமோத்தில் அழு.
Today you crying in the presence of God.
அண்டவரே, நான் உம்மை மற்றுளித்துவிட்ட.
Lord, I have denied you.
உம்மை சபித்துவிட்ட.
Lord, I cursed you.
உங்களைத் தெரியாதுன்னு நான் சத்தியம் மண்ணிட்டா, அண்டவரே.
Lord, I swear saying I do not know you.
எவளும் பெரிய திரோகம்.
What a treachery.
ஒரு பச்சை திரோகியான மாறி போய்ட்ட.
Lord, I have become a traitor, Lord.
என்ன நீ மன்னியுன்னு கேட.
Please pardon me, you asked of the Lord.
இனிமை நானுமை நேசிப்பேன் சொல்ல.
You say, "Going forward, I will love you."
இன்னைக்கு இந்த வசனத்தை நீ இந்த கேட்டுக்கொண்டுருக்கும்பொழுது.
Today as you huck into these words.
உனக்கு கொஞ்ச வெலனை கத்தர் தரபோகுற.
The Lord is going to give you a little strength.
அந்த கொஞ்ச வெலன் கூட இல்ல, அது நான்தான் நீ மற்றுளிச்சிட.
And because you didn't have the little strength, also you denied.
இனிமேல்.
Going forward.
நீ ஒருபோது மற்றுளியாது இருக்கற, அந்த கொஞ்ச வெலன், இப்போ இந்த அபிஷேகத்தில் உனக்குள்ள வரபோது.
By now this noting, a little strength is going to come into you, whereby you will never deny again.
நான் உங்களுக்கேல்விக்கக்கிற.
I'll ask you a question.
ஆண்டவர் அந்த கொஞ்ச வெலன், அந்த பிலதில்லியபா சபைக்கு கொடுத்த, அந்த கொஞ்ச வெலனை, இன்னைக்கு எனக்கு தந்தா, நான் சாகற வரைக்கு, இனிமேல், தேவத்தை மற்றுளிக்க மாட்டேன் சொல்லுறவங்க, உங்களே கைகளை ஊயற்றுங்க.
And those who say that the Lord, the little strength which the Lord had given to Philadelphia, if he would give it today to me, I'll do the deed until my last end, I will not deny God. Pray, please raise your hands.
அந்த பிலதில்லியபா சபைங்கறது ஒரு முனிதான் அல்ல.
The Philadelphia church is not one person.
அங்கோ ஒரு பிரியம் கூட்டின் ஜனங்கள் இருந்தார்கள்.
And there was a large multitude of people.
அந்த எல்லா ஜனத்துக்கு அந்த கொஞ்ச வெலன் இருந்தது.
But all the people had the little strength.
அந்த கொஞ்ச வெலன்திலையும் கத்தர மற்றுளிக்காம நின்றார்கள்.
And with the little strength, they stood firm for God, not denying God.
அண்டவரே, அண்டவரே.
Lord.
அந்த பிலதில்லியபா சபைக்கு கொடுத்த, அந்த கொஞ்ச வெலனை, எங்க கொனவட்ட சபைக்கு கொடுங்க, அண்டவரே.
Lord, the little strength which you give to Philadelphia church, please give it to our Kondavatam church.
எனக்கு தாங்க, அண்டவரே.
Lord, please give it to me.
யா மனவிக்கு, யா புரிஷனுக்கு, யா பிள்ளைகளுக்கு தாங்க, அண்டவரே.
Give to my wife, my husband, my children, Lord.
அந்த கொஞ்ச வெலனை எங்க உழிகாரங்களுக்கு தாங்க.
Lord, give the little strength to our workers.
எங்க சபைல வர்ற புதிய ஆத்துமாக்களுக்கு தாங்க.
Give that to our new souls to our church.
எங்க சபைலைல வாலிப்ப பயங்களுக்கு, பிள்ளைகளுக்கு தாங்க.
Give that little strength to our young brothers and sisters in the church.
பிண்மாற்றத்திலும் தோற்றபோயும், விரக்தியடைந்து கடக்கிற, என் சபை ஜனங்களுக்கு இந்த கொஞ்ச வெலனை தாக.
People who are in backsliding or in rigid condition and in weariness, give them the little strength, Lord.
இப்போது கொஞ்ச வெலன் கிடக்கிற ஒரு நேரம்.
Now with the time, we have to receive the little strength.
ஆனா நீ எடுத்த முடிவில நிக்கணோ.
And you have to stand at the end.